Old business. The M-O-U. Do you have anything we want to discuss on that? Or you can just put it on next time.
No, I can report. I sent copies today by email to all of the board members as well as to Pam and Chris. Not knowing what word process I'm supposed to use, I sent WPD DOC and PDF copies to everybody. It's all the same document. I finally was able to speak with Chief Russell, who informed me that it was fine by him. And he had no problem with it. And he had no problem with it the day he read it, the day he got it. But that he had forwarded it on to the town administrator because he didn't know whether or not Board of Selectmen or Towns Council wanted to review it. Had not received any feedback. And I had a couple of conversations with Peter Flynn today. Initially, I was under the impression that it wasn't something that was going to be presented to the Board of Selectmen or to Town Council. But I got a call back late in the day saying that the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, is that the appropriate phrase? Had decided that he wanted to send it to Towns Council for review. So that's being done either today or tomorrow.
This will go to Town Council and we'll get yet another view of it from there.
I assume that we will either get "it looks fine," or "it looks fine if you make these adjustments," at which point I will bring it back presumably at the next board meeting with their recommended changes, assuming that their recommended changes were appropriate, and recommend that the board consider that revision. However, in the intervening time, if any board members have any comments or suggested changes on this most recent draft, I'd be happy to consider trying to incorporate them and get that over to Peter Flynn and/or Bart Mayer within a couple of days.
I have a procedural question.
Thank you.
Since we are incorporating this as our policy, the school district, we are basically having this message of an extension of how we deal with the police department. Is there something that they do on the other side when they go through this process of going through the town officials and the Chinese?
That's what's happening right now.
I know, but is there something that they procedurally could do?
I believe that probably this would be submitted to the Board of Selectmen for their approval.
It would have to be.
And so that would probably be our highest deserving chairman of the school board would submit this.
But it's been submitted.
My understanding was the school board has the authority to say, "This is the memorandum of understanding that the school should enter into." And the selectmen, after my conversations with Mr. Flynn with advice of Town Council, would speak on behalf of the police department and say, "We're in favor of entering into this memorandum of understanding."
And so when this goes into the book, it's not just a school board policy, but it's also a town policy.
By and routine, yeah.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to.
I think that would.
Thank you, part of the whole of why to discuss that.
Yeah, and that would be the way it would happen, I think.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Arnie, for all the work you did.
Oh, yes.
This is really quite something.
One second, thank you.
The reason I put J-I-C-D in as something that we needed was, which we have in fact adopted, was that you had a concern in regard to the memorandum of understanding that somewhere it says.
Page two, subparaphrase, small h.
So my question, if we have adopted a discipline policy which sets forth circumstances under which parents should be notified of simple assaults, so then the question is, do we have that under J-I-C-D?
We do not.
So you would like to have us have that?
I think in order to take advantage of the exception, which is a reasonable thing to do, we would need to either amend J-I-C-D or develop a policy that would satisfy and allow us to take the exception.
I have not compared these two documents. Is that the only major difference between the two?
No, no, see, it says.
No, I'm saying this whole phrase here does kind of set aside one of the requirements of the law. Or it says, "We have another way of doing it." And I'm just asking, are there other things like that, collisions between the memorandum of understanding and our adopted policy?
I think the answer is no, but I don't see it as a collision between our policies and the memo. Within the statute 193D, there's one clearly set forth exception, which is reporting of simple assaults.
And that's actually the language that you use here then?
Yeah, I took the language from the statute and put it into subparagraph h. But in order to sew that, and it's a violation of law, it's not a misdemeanor or felony, but it's a violation if you don't report something when you have an obligation to report it. So unless we adopt a policy, we're putting the administration in the position of unwittingly or wittingly committing a violation of law by not reporting a simple assault, which under definitions in the state statute include a lot of conduct that may well take place on a fairly regular basis that most people would not be offended, seriously offended by, and think that would want to report to the police. And I'm sure that that's why the drafters of the legislation built that exception into it. But this policy, we have J-I-C-D, doesn't do what a policy needs to do in order to take advantage of that exception. And I'm not sure, after reading this safe school zone policy that we have J-I-C-D, whether we should just amend this or whether we should adopt a separate policy. You know, I think it can be done either way. All I'm saying is, I've read it.
If we already have it and we have a mechanism for amending it, we might want to do that. That doesn't preclude making our own policy, but at least covers this for the time being.
Well, since it says it's about student conduct and discipline, it just makes sense to use this policy because it's easy to find the reference to it.
But then amended?
And just amend it. Just amend, just amend J-I-C-D.
And we do that now, or do we have to have it here?
We would bring it.
I would not.
I'd like to just be able to present the policy next month that we'd be happy to just adopt it. I just want to make sure that I get the language right.
Okay.
But did you want to?
I'll give you the statute later.
Thank you.
So I think we've done that.
You told me the one comment I wanted to make. There was some language in the original memo that had some very peculiar language, which talked about being able to circumvent that policy. And we all agreed that that was cumbersome and probably inappropriate language and projected the wrong image for that document. The draft that you have has in bold print a paragraph at the end which incorporates that in a slightly different way, but it lets everyone know that just because we have this memorandum of understanding, it doesn't mean that it usurps the authority of either the school or the police department to act in a manner that they are authorized to act. You haven't even had a brand cap there.
Do we have to? We don't have to make any modifications. We have to wait until the town says they're cool with it and then we all?
I assume we could accept it subject to, but if they want to make a modification, maybe we have to go back to the rest of the.
So that's the care of the old business, like that.
Well, it's on your, no, it's not perjury. We're fine. I'll just put it back on the agenda.
Let's hit to parents. Arnie, can you speak to that?
I'd rather not because I haven't written it, notwithstanding the prodding by the other adult who lives in my household on a regular basis writing.
I don't think that this is a bad, I actually don't think this is a bad thing because I think that parents get so much in the mail over the summer, it might not have been read. I think it's coming together that we really want to do these forums and that maybe an attachment to the Friday newsletter would be the best place to have this letter together with the discussion of the forum. So I think it was very prudent on your part to.
To finish the walkway.
Technology committee, I guess we've.
We did that, ready.
School board goals, do we have a couple of those?
Yes.
What I tried to do is mimic, those are school goals. There's also.
We have school goals and school board goals.
And I wrote the school board goals. Pam and I got together for our discussions at the retreat. And I tried to have our board goals mirror. Here it is. Page 11. To mirror what Pam and the school goal. And ours is a little different because she's got one, two. One is about safety in schools for us, safety in schools. Two is about literacy, it's about math. And three is about literacy. Ours puts math and literacy as number two. And number three for our goal is listening to the community, community forum, that kind of thing, because it seemingly that was one of our strong goals that is different than. So anyway, anybody want to?
I have a question. The school board will support teacher training in these areas. Is there a possibility that that could be misconstrued as a funding mandate?
I didn't. Do you have an answer to that? How about we support the idea?
You actually adopted budget with a line item for professional development, so you do support it financially.
And by my question, I don't mean to imply that we shouldn't, but I'm just querying whether or not using those words in the school board goals.
I guess I felt that we need to put that in there because we've got a lot of new teachers coming in year after year. And these programs, Everyday Math, Sixth Grade, John Collins, HM, if we're saying this training is important or essential and we support it, so when the administration says, "You need to take this class," it's not coming just from her, it's coming from the school board. The school board says, "This is our curriculum and you should learn it." That was my intent by putting it in there.
Would it be, would it say more clearly if it were to say the school board continues to encourage teacher training in these areas?
I don't encourage it. I expect it. I mean, if you don't know how to teach Everyday Math, we've got two people in our school now that have become Everyday Math instructors. And I expect teachers who don't have that training to get it. I don't know if anybody else feels that's right. I just don't, I don't understand how we can have a program and not make sure that we're going to have teachers.
Well, I guess the question that I have is, in what way does this support the principle in making these things happen? That's the purpose of these goals.
Right, right.
And we should word it so that she can pick it up and lay it down on the table and say, "Look, this is what we expect." Whatever we do, I would take that sentence, support teacher training, and I would somehow get that thought into number two.
It is part of number two.
It is not. It is hanging way down here after rubrics and writing.
But it's part of paragraph two. My goal two. Pam, what happens when we hire teachers that don't have the.
Oh, so you're saying we worry. We get them to the training. And we do, I mean, and Arnie's question is a mandate for funding. I think it does indicate that the school board will provide funding to ensure that teachers are, now, you don't provide it, you build it into a budget and the town ultimately provides it. But I think that's a piece that tells teachers too that we expect it, we support it, and we're going to make sure it's there for you to get it. We do have the money and the budget and through grants, that's how we've always.
So leaving it the way it is, okay.
Well, I mean, that depends on you, whether you think it's okay or not, but I do think the implication is that there's funding for it.
I guess my question arises out of my own ignorance because in the private sector, if that were included in a document, I could see a situation where employees would come to management and say, "Now, the board of directors has said they'll support training in this area. There's a continuing education program that's being sponsored by this organization, happens to be in San Diego in January, and I think I should go. The boards are on record saying they're going to support this, and why won't you send me to San Diego for this?" I didn't want to put you in the position of having to, apologizing in the wrong word, but explain that what the board meant was encourage, cajole, expect, appreciate, but not set out specific budget items in addition to.
In addition to what's already.
What's already in the budget.
Yeah.
And I apologize for raising you because I think it's a tempest in the teapot, and I think it's probably fine the way it's written, which is my ignorance that caused the confusion today.
I think those directives to the question of the effectiveness of the document in supporting the staff, and that's, that is, you know, that, we actually talked about simply modifying the main sentence of two, to support and monitor the training and implementation, well, to put training in that first one, which would say, "We will support and monitor the implementation of the following," and include training in that in some way. The question I have for, for the staff is, you know, we're saying, "We're going to monitor how you do your rubrics, and we're going to monitor how you coordinate things." Are we going to really monitor that, or are we going to ask you to report to us how you're doing it?
Well, I think, I think when I said, "Support and monitor the implementation of the following," this is already the curriculum, right? We're not doing that. We've already chosen this is. What we're going to say is, "We support it," and I think support includes training, it's inherent in that understanding, and just say, "Okay, at the end of the year," we've been doing Everyday Math now for five, six years, so is it working?
Yes.
Okay. But that's, I think that's the role of every school board, is to say, "Okay, this is, this is the curriculum we've adopted," and you say, "We're going to spend money on it." And at the end of the year, we're supposed to say, "Is it working?"
I think that that's what we hire administrators for, in my interpretation of working on school board goals in the past. I think it's great to have the word support in there, but I think monitor implies something that really is our.
No, what I mean by monitor is, I don't want to put money into something that's not working anymore. I mean, it's assessment. So maybe assess is the better word. Do you know what I'm saying? It's like.
We're not going to assess the progress.
We don't do that work.
But we have to ask the question.
We have to ask the question, is it working? But what we can do is reevaluate how our goals are doing at the end of the year at that point in time. We have a goal and see if it's reached or not. We don't need to put in there, in my opinion.
We've got all this data to say, "Okay, we've got." No. My understanding of the role of the school board is that you accept the curriculum, right? You pay for the curriculum, and then you have to say, "Is this curriculum moving the kids forward?" And if I'm wrong about that, someone's got to correct me.
No, we can ask our administration for those reports, but I think having it inherent in our goals is duplicating what their job is. We still need to have the goal to set the standard for them to reach. The monitoring of it, you know, you can put a statement.
How about efficacy? What I'm trying to do is, we're going to support and then monitor the efficacy of the following.
I don't think we monitor anything, that's the problem. What we're asking for is, we're asking for an evaluation of the curriculum with, from the viewpoints of.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
From the viewpoints of progress in writing, math, coordination of the seventh grade curriculum, that's what we're looking for.
I suppose just as an example, if we look at what the goals are for the community school that has been worked on for a while, and that's what we had publicized, is that we were supporting the goals when we were working on some of the same things, like we will continue to maintain a safe nurturing environment, and the chief child is accepted and challenged while maintaining high, it's a reach. I think that's what our statement as a school board may wish to include is a reach. Okay. How we evaluate that is not part of the goal. We can establish that as part of our administrative questions we ask, but I would say that we need to possibly make it simpler for ourselves versus using some terminology that may implicate something that we don't have time to.
So do you have a suggestion to make this simpler?
Some edits by taking some words out, yeah, let's hear them.
Before we start word spitting.
Yes.
Let me just, let me just make sure that you expressed quite well where we want to be at the end of this year. We want to know how well, five years of Everyday Math, where now we've got, we've got courts and whole courts and moved up to sixth grade through Everyday Math. We're going to ask the staff to evaluate specifically how this group of students now is doing. And maybe, hopefully, there are tools that will do that. That we can, that we can put as a fairly, a fairly precise goal. I mean, we're accepting this curriculum, right? We've already said we're supporting and maintaining.
Yeah, this, yeah.
But you've expressed a couple of concerns here about continuity from the middle school to high school. You've expressed a concern about the effectiveness of adopted programs. And we ought to express the goals in terms that get us there and that prepare the staff for replying to us.
So do you have some suggestions to move us?
Well, and I'll think about that.
I think you can take out the first two because I think in number two.
I'm sorry, what first two?
The whole first paragraph in number two, along with the bullets, clearly, to me, clearly states.
A goal.
A goal. And the next two sentences after that are part of that. They're applied. So you could really remove them. We can, we can ask for input on that from Pam, or less is more. I think that third sentence, though, is a separate issue from, completely. I think that's a number three, and then there's a number four. Because I think.
Okay, okay.
I think that, and I don't know if monitor is the right word, but.
Evaluation?
But evaluate or. The school, the school has a goal, the SAU has a goal. They have been talking about discussions between seventh grade and eighth grade curriculum and the high school for a very long time. I know that it's happening. I know those discussions are happening.
The board encourages the coordination of the seventh, eighth grade curriculum with the high school.
It's a little more than that. I think we want to know how it's happened.
I think we've set that goal.
Sir, administration, can I ask you, answer some questions? Are you going to be entering into some activities that would be this coordination that's new and different other than what you have been doing, or is this?
I think it's going to continue. It's going to continue. The coordination is going to continue through committees that Doug has going. As I listen to your conversation, if I might interject, I think the word monitor seems to be the one that's causing the problem. And I think I hear people feeling that if they monitor something, they have to go in the classroom and watch it. And I think the way you monitor is you ask for reports from the administration, and that when you say you're going to monitor it and support it, you're telling teachers that there is some accountability in the process as well as support and encouragement. Monitor may not be the right word, but.
I think we could put it in a different spot in the sentence.
Well, I think Pam hit the nail on the head when I wrote this and what my intention was. When I said monitor, it meant, "We're going to ask the administration."
How's it going?
"How's it going?" We're not going in the classroom, we're not setting up the benchmarks to meet. That's their job. Our job is to say, "Is it working?" I believe that's you.
It is me. I had a conversation with you, Teresa, about, what, a week ago? We brainstormed some ideas of what this might look like. And one of the things that you told me was that Brenda was going to come this evening, and it would be very worthwhile to listen to what she had to say before I actually cast anything in stone. In the meantime, since that time that you and I talked, both myself and Doug came up with a very similar list to what is in the piece that she passed out tonight, that Brenda passed out tonight. And I'm speaking about those indicators. I was looking at these. One of them says, "Our community school welcomes diversity." And I had found some lists that said things like, "We are a results-driven school system." And my intention was to take these sources, have a meeting with Pam and Doug, which I haven't been able to do yet, and develop some indicators that the community could respond to. And you can do that without actually getting a group of people together, you can send a survey out. But the conversation that happens when you ask people to expand on why they rated something in a particular way is very rich. And that's really where I think it's valuable to have the community actually come together rather than just pass surveys out. So what I'm thinking this is going to look like is to have perhaps a series of these one-a-meeting where we can have people sit down and maybe sort of do a rubric. I have a Likert scale that actually goes from one to 11.
What scale?
A Likert scale. It's a gradation of one being a weak rating and 11 being a strong rating, and you actually rate where you feel you are on a particular indicator, or where your school is on a particular indicator, or where your school should be on a particular indicator. And then it would be discussions about, well, what did the ratings say and why did you feel that way? And that will generate action steps about priorities and strategic planning. So I'm lucky that your October meeting is early, it's the first week, and there would still be time to set a date in October to actually have the first forum. And I think it's an excellent idea that we sort of incorporate your letter home to parents with the invitation to come to these forums as something that the board is sponsoring in order to help set vision and direction for the school. So while I don't have anything in writing to show you, there's a lot of thinking that's been going on, and it's beginning to gel and come together for me.
Could we also incorporate, I'm not sure how the other board members feel about this, a letter to the community?
Absolutely. And I'm not sure whether this is a bulk mailer or whether it goes into the newspapers inviting people.
I think it could go into the newspapers because the bulk mail would be very expensive and not.
Michael.
The outlook, if we can get it in by the October 3rd.
No, well, we would be having an October meeting, and what's the deadline for the October?
Your meeting's on the 3rd.
The 3rd is the deadline for the outlook.
No, no, the outlook.
But you could put the invitation.
The outlook, the outlook comes in first of the month, right?
Yeah, we're going to do that.
Put the invitation.
Change it to every other month.
I got, I got an email today that suggested the deadline for us, and it was the 3rd, and it was published on the 13th.
This is very weird. I don't think we should trust the outlook.
Michael's the outlook?
No, the outlook is the one that's like. Sorry.
Well, maybe we can make quick questions. Michael's is the one that told us.
Maybe it's still. I would like to put it in the paper as a little ad, and then we could have Michael also do an article if he wants.
If someone could contact the town hall just to ask whether we can put it in the board.
And when it would come out, actually. Because the problem is, if we count on it, if we count on it and it doesn't come out, it's terrible.
I can make sure that we hit the local papers before the date, but we haven't set a date yet. And I know that the board really wanted to be there, all of you, wanted to be there to participate and to listen. So it would be helpful if we could set that date perhaps in the second half of October, and then I can actually put something in the paper even before you have your next meeting.
Our emails, Christine and.
Uh, emails Christine and ask and let her know if Thursday, the 18th.
Will work.
Will work.
And what time were you thinking? Sometimes later works for the community.
Um, no later, what time? Seven?
Seven is fine with me, whatever time you want.
I think we should have, but we should have a definite beginning and end time. That helps people out a lot.
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine, you've got it.
In the cafeteria? We don't have any idea how many people are going to come.
Do we want to insinuate what the topic is?
Well, are we absolutely?
Oh, sure. Um, let me work on that though and I'll make sure.
We just need to know the date to see if we're all.
Have to talk to Brenda, have to talk to Pam and Doug.
Right, 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 right.
But again, I'm looking at something where we have something we can react to and then we talk about why we reacted in a particular way.
Right.
And then perhaps be able to set priorities from that as well by how we rated things in terms of strengths and weaknesses or what should be the focus. So that's where I'm headed.
Isn't it possible to have both rooms set up? I don't know if that's possible, but to me, this is such a much better.
Better room.
Yeah. Much more intimate for the discussion.
The acoustics tend to be, and it's a large room to feel comfortable in, in the cafeteria.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, we can.
Are we ready? I want to start by congratulating the students, the staff and the administration for making adequate yearly progress, considering a year ago, we were standing here or sitting here and talking about how we had not made it in a subgroup. So, I mean, that's a great improvement and hopefully I can take you through pages 12 to 15 in your packet. And by the end, you'll have a little bit of better understanding of how adequately progress is measured in the state and you can go out and share it with all your friends. First off, as you look at page 12, what we have here is the group of categories that we have to make AYP. And for us, there are four categories that we have to look at out of nine because we have at least 11 in one of those sub-populations. So therefore, the whole district, white, non-Hispanic, economically disadvantaged and educationally disabled are the categories that we have to make adequate yearly progress. We have to make adequate yearly progress here in Henneker in three different ways. Number one, we have to have, our participation rate has to be 95%. We were 100%. Every single student here at Henneker took the test. Secondly, um, one of the things is at John Stark, they have to have a 75% graduation rate. Since we don't have a graduation requirement, therefore, we don't have to meet that requirement. Next one is 90% attendance rate for a group of 40 or more. And our attendance rate in each one of those categories was between 94.1 and 96.2. And you must be at least 90%. So again, we met it, we made it there. The one area that we're going to talk mostly about tonight is the performance targets. So any of these categories that we have 11 students in, we have to meet a index target. And there are three ways that you can make the index target. You can actually make the index number that's set in both reading and math, or you can make it by the confidence interval, or you can make it by safe harbor. So when you look on page 12 and you look at meeting the requirements, you can see that we've either made it as a straight yes, made it by the confidence interval and economically disadvantaged, or we made it by educationally disabled. And, um, in educationally disabled, we made it by the safe harbor rule. So again, um, we made it, we have a yes down both those columns in reading and math and therefore have made adequate yearly progress on that sheet. As we go to page 13, this is the breakdown. And what you're going to find is that participation in the index targets are there. It shows us what our participation rate was, and I said that was 100%. The second part of this is it's comparing what our scores were in 2006 in performance versus what they are in 2007. That index score that we have to meet in reading is 82. In math, it's 76. So when we go across and we look at all of those four categories and we look at our index target for reading, what we find is the whole district was 90.5, white, non-Hispanic was 90.7, economically disadvantaged was 79. Did not meet that 82, but did meet it through another possibility, which was confidence interval. And educationally disability, what we found was 71.8. Didn't make it by the index, did not make it by confidence interval, but did make it by safe harbor. And I'll explain that a little bit further as we go through the presentation. Again, as we look on the math side, and we know the target is 76, we find that the whole district was 87.7, that the white, non-Hispanic was 87.7, economically disadvantaged 82.6, and educationally disability was 65.7. And again, made it by safe harbor. And as we go through the presentation, you'll get a clear understanding of what safe harbor really means. So the confidence interval, let's talk about that first in economically disadvantaged. What happens is the state wants to make sure that every group gets looked at correctly. So they're setting that there's a standard deviation that's looked at, and they're looking at the number of students in the group being evaluated and observed against an index score of that group. So they've done this lengthy calculation and come up with, well, if 39 students take it and they take it over and over again, their index score wouldn't be for reading 82. They would actually have to be 72.8. So by looking at our confidence interval being 72.8, in our group of students, our 39 students' score was 79, we have now made adequate yearly progress for economically disadvantaged by the confidence interval. And again, there's a long chart and every imaginable group of students you can look at. You can look at that and see whether or not they made it by the confidence interval. And again, the state wants to be 99% sure that they're confident that that group of students on any particular day would have made the progress. And if you wanted more information on that, I wanted to see the formula. I'm sure I can share that with you. On the other hand, yes?
When I look at this, like I'm looking at the, the number of students in participation versus number of students in performance, and the number's different?
Yes.
Why's that?
One of them is the number of students who took the test in our school. The other number is the students that we were responsible for that took it. So students might have come in from another school, but we got their scores. They weren't here for us last year in that particular subgroup. Okay? So we were not responsible for them as being part of meeting adequate yearly progress. So it was in their, in their, correct me if I'm wrong Pam, but their testing year.
Yes, not the teaching.
Versus their teaching year. So again, that's why we get two different numbers. And we get two different reports when they come out with the actual numbers for students because again, we still get their reports, although we're not responsible for them being part of the count that we need to do. So we had 39 students that were identified in that particular category. All 39 students took the test last year. So that gives us our 100%. So when we look at safe harbor, that's what we call the 10% rule, requires that that group index is, we look at 100 being the number that everybody's trying to reach, 100, the index score is 100. We take that minus the index score that they actually get, and what we do is we find the difference. So last year, if we looked at our students and we'll do reading right now, and we look in 2006, we see we had 62 students. The index score for them was 66.5. So if we take 100 minus 66.5, we end up with 33.5 being what the difference is between making 100, 100 index and what we actually did. So for the 10% rule to work, we had to improve by 3.5. That's 10% of 33.5. So our students this past year, our 56 students scored 71.8. So when I subtract 100 from 71.8, I end up with 28.2. So if I subtract 33.5 minus 28.2, I end up with 5.3. My score was supposed to be 3.35 or better to make it. So with that understanding, again, safe harbor was met. That group of students made adequate yearly progress. There was a 10% improvement by that population over the year before. We go through the same thing with math and we actually end up with a seven point improvement over the previous year. So we were at our index, 100 minus, our index was 41.3 last year. This year it was 34.7, making it seven. We actually had to be 4.1. So again, we made it, therefore, that's how they, again, calculated safe harbor. So three ways, we used all three ways to meet where we are by each of the groups that we needed to do, the four groups that we saw.
Before you leave that, I just wanted to note that the economically disadvantaged students, while they were three points below the index target in ma, in reading, uh, they were right up there in mathematics.
Correct. They made it by the actual index score of 76. So again, they made it straight first way, which is a good, again, a nice showing by that group of students. And again, um, as we look at this and just keep in mind, as we move to, towards 2014, the target keeps changing. So our target was 82 in reading this year. The group of students who are going to take the test in October, the index target will now be in reading 86, and it will be 82 in math. So again, the stakes have gotten a little higher. So again, but I'm sure our students are beginning to be prepared and will do a great job.
Economically disadvantaged, however, scored lower in the index score from '06 to '07.
Right.
So they wouldn't have made it on the safe harbor, so that's good if they made it under the confidence interval.
Right. So again, they're giving, they're making sure that depending on the number of students, that there's, there's different ways to meet this. And what I'm going to talk about at the end of this is the state is actually looking at a fourth way in New Hampshire for students, for all students in certain groups to make adequate yearly progress. And that's the follow the child model that I'll discuss at the very end. As we go to page 14, and we look at what, what's done, this is where they come up with all the numbers in the calculations. So as you can see, the performance index points earned, as you can see, substantially below proficient. A student, we can either be a zero, a 1A, or a 1B. Each of them are given in index points for being in those categories.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just lost you.
Okay. If you look on page 14, you look at the performance index points and we're looking at substantially below proficient category, and you see a zero, you see a 1A and a 1B. So students are given, depending on what they've scored, a, a particular index. So, so a 1A student would be given 20 points. So if we just take the whole district, we had three students who scored, who were identified as 1A candidates. So we would get 60 points towards our total index score for the district. If we're a 1B, it's 40. We now move to partially proficient, and a 2A would be 60, a 2B would be 80. We then look at proficient and proficient with distinction, three and four, we are given 100 index points for every student we have in those categories. So as you can see, um, as we looked at this, as we add up the total, multiply it by the number of points, we end up with 26,780. Divide that by the 296, you end up with 90.5. And again, we know the index point was going to be 82. So we made it. And if you went down in our other four categories, in reading, that's how they were calculated, and that took us to the other sheets. Same thing with math. As we look at page 15, this is the new model that's come out. This is the first time we've seen this, these results, and it's the follow the child model. And what's happening is each student will have a target that he or she will strive for each year to show growth in their academic ability over the previous year. So as we look at that, what's going to happen is, and I think if I hand out this sheet here, it will make a little more sense to you before you look at that. And what this is showing is this week, what's white, it's white out on this is actually we've got students and, you have it Pam? You have one?
I have.
So as we look at this, what you're going to see is that, that first student at the top in 2005, they scored 642. Their target in 2006 needed to be 740. They actually scored 746. So the state has said that student made their target. With that said, a new target is set for 2007. So that student needs to score 842 again for us to meet that target, for that child to meet the target. So what they've done in reading is they've gone across and they looked at every single one of our students and said they had a target to make in 2006. If they made it, we got a plus for it. If they didn't, it went against us. They divided the number of students, they divided the number of students that made it by the number of students we actually had to give us our percentage. And that takes you back to the other sheet, which said that we had two, in the whole district in reading, we had 296 students that took the test. 202 of them made their target last year, giving us 68.2%. The target growth that needed to happen for Henneker, for all schools in New Hampshire was 57. So again, we made adequate yearly progress by what they talked about here. As we went down, as you know, educationally disability was made by safe harbor, the other way of doing this. If we use this model, that group made it by confidence interval. And again, that, as you run out each one of those four groups that we need to make adequate yearly progress for, that's how that was figured out. And again, each of those percentages needed to be against 57 in reading, 53 in math.
This is a pilot program, but this hasn't been accepted by the feds?
Correct. This program here is, they've given us the information this year. They're trying to get approval by the federal government, but they have not received.
And so this could just be a fourth way.
Correct.
Which would be good.
And I'm told that this way can only help you. It can't hurt you. If you didn't make adequate yearly progress this way, then it doesn't go against you if you made it one of the other ways. But what we're finding is if you made it one way, you're usually making it some of the other ways. So I'm not so sure.
With respect to the educational disability, under the follow the child, it was made under the confidence interval, yet it wouldn't have been under the confidence interval the way it was done. Does that mean that there was a very wide range of scores within that group? Some kids did terribly, poorly, if in fact, the scores.
So what's, what's happening is, is that some of those same kids, some of the same kids that might have been a 1A, okay? When their target was set, they actually made it. Or there were more students that made it through meeting their target versus actually moving to a level of proficiency. So again, um, we had 28 of 56 students meet their target in that category in reading. If I went back to our other, I'm not sure this is going to work out for me. When I look at that.
You're on page 14?
I go back to page 14. When I look at, um, special education, I look at the numbers that were in 1A and 1B that we got very, we had eight students there. Some of those students might have made their target because it was set at a space they would have gotten it, which we only got a few points here for. We might have gotten an actual plus for them somewhere along the line. Or that could have happened with a 2A or 2B. Now we're not looking at an individual, we're not looking at a score of 41. Or that could have happened with a 2A or 2B. Now we're not looking at an individual, we're not looking at a score of 40 as an index score. We're looking at a yes, no answer whether or not they made their target.
Arnie's original question, the, the spread for educational disability is, is very wide. If you look at the distributions on page 14, which are, which are mostly peaked on level three and proficient, with a long tail going down to, to less than proficient. The economic disability folks have, for example, there's a significant population in 1B in, in that case, and that then makes the standard deviation so wide that in addition to the fact it's a very small sample.
Right. And as they develop their confidence interval, again, they're looking at, they're taking the target that at 20% of their school's not making it and then every, then starting to make a difference from there when they make that cutoff of what that index would be. And they just break it up from there and keep moving.
This is based on No Child Left Behind.
Correct.
Is this other piece, which is, where did I lost it?
Follow the child.
Follow the child, are they looking to replace?
This is actually a New Hampshire model that they're trying to have approval for, for students in New Hampshire. And they need federal approval because it needs to meet the criteria set by No Child Left Behind.
But it would be in addition to the.
It would be a fourth way.
So.
And then it does, is it aimed at addressing the fact that you have relatively small populations in New Hampshire schools? Is that one of the driving forces? I'm just trying to understand why.
The reason that I, I'm hearing and following with the commissioners look at this is that we're going to take each individual student and we're trying to see progress made by that individual student.
Resonant statistical.
Right. We want to see that student make progress from the year before. So even those students who are in the three and four category, that may be scoring 745 or 750 as a seventh grader, we want to see them improve the following year to even do better than the previous year, that there's been some growth made, that there's, that they're not stagnant. So again, we're trying to make every student make progress from the year before.
But in follow the child, the level of growth is weighted. It'd be based on whatever disability or, or challenge that they may have, more so than it is. I didn't realize in, in No Child Left Behind, they actually do, there is a, a weight given or a handicap or whatever you want to call it that evens things out, it sounds like, based on your explanation, you know? And that's why we have, I can't remember what you called it, but CI and SH, which makes me feel better than originally. But does follow the child have a better ratio so that, yes, you have to make progress, but we're not expecting you, you know, child five to make, if he has an educational disability, to make the same kind of progress that the white, non-Hispanic child with no disability has.
Right. Each individual is looked at separately. And then there's a calculation done for the score that they have and the amount of growth that they would need to make in a year. And that's the target that they're given. If they make that target, then you as a school have done a, an outstanding job with that individual or have met the, the requirements necessary to move that child forward.
Let me ask you this. You handed us a, this chart, it says follow the child. The target scores and all these scores was very tightly grouped here. What would an educationally disadvantaged or an economically disadvantaged set of scores look like?
It's, it would be hard to tell by this group.
But, but it's reasonable to, to expect that, given this history of scores, A, another history of scores, that that 2,000 target would not be 840. It might be 600 or something like that.
But you've got to remember that the first number only means the grade that they're in. So take that first number away. So only use the last two numbers. So and remember that 40 is considered proficient. Okay? So 40 and above, no matter where you are, is considered a, a three. And it might go 40 to 49, 51 before you hit a four, okay? And again, depending on what grade level you're at, the splits are a little bit different. It's not as clean as anybody who is between 30 and 37 is a 2B. It's not that clean for me. Depends on what grade level they are, exactly what they're going to be considering, how many index points they're going to get, considering the score that they make.
Get to Chris, you have a problem, a question rather. It might be reasonable to believe that, that, that 844 might be an 832.
Right.
For, for another student.
Correct.
I got two policies, email policy and code of ethics. I certainly hope you guys read this so we can just make some motions. Well, I tell you, I'm telling, I'm not, I'm not going to allow a lot of discussion on this. This is going to either get tabled again or get passed.
Needs to get tabled. There's no retention policy.
Wait, 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 wait. There is supposed to be a retention policy.
No, that says it's going to be put on, that says where it's going to be. You must say how long it's going to keep it.
And retain?
For a period of.
Until, it has to be retained forever?
No, no, not forever. Depends on what it is.
I think we're on page 16.
It depends on what you're talking about.
We have to make a motion. Can you make a motion?
I moved.
I make a motion that we accept the email policy as.
Second. Brief discussion?
I move that we amend the email policy to include a retention period.
To be to a designated server and retain.
For a period of.
For a period of one year.
Unfortunately, it depends on what the email's about. There are different retention policies for different kinds of things.
That's what I thought.
It has to be according to the records retention policy.
Retained according, retained according to.
The records retention policy issued by the Department of Education.
So moved.
Further discussion?
No, we have to give a second to, to move to amend the motion.
Yes, 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 yes.
Second.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Anybody else? It passes.
Now we go back to the.
No, 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 we, we, no, we, we now have to, we now have to deal with the amendment.
I thought so moved. Okay, go ahead.
The, the motion stands amended.
The motion stands amended.
Now we need to vote on that.
You want to vote on that? Okay. All in favor of that?
Discussion?
Discussion?
Retained. Where? Is there a backup or is it just to the server? I, the backup question is, to my mind, an extremely important.